Geez, it's quiet gas. Good evening. And then there's that. Good evening. It's November 5th, 2025. The 41st meeting of the 26th council will come to order. All councillors will be present this evening with councillor Sanchez joining via Zoom and councillor Lewis coming up just a little bit later this evening. We're going to start with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance in English and then in Spanish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the table near the chamber's entrance. Members of the public, city staff and the media have the ability to view this meeting in person and on live streams through four different platforms. GovTV, on Comcast Channel 16, the GovTV website, YouTube and Zoom webinar. The live streams can be accessed from most smartphones, tablets or computers. Also, this meeting is closed captioned and you may enable the closed captioning services on your television or device at this time. The video recording of this and all past council meetings will remain available for viewing at any time on the city council's website. Council staff is available via telephone if members of the public need assistance finding the videos online. Please call 505-768-3100 for assistance during business hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 p.m. this evening if needed. With regard to decorum in the chambers, we want tonight's proceeding to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no applause, snapping or other outbursts during the meeting. I will provide one warning to anyone causing a disruption. Upon the second or continued disruption, that individual will be asked to leave the chambers and if necessary, security will be asked to escort that person out of the chambers. Such removal from the council chambers will be effective for the remainder of the meeting and if continued disruptions occur, I may recess the meeting until order is restored and if necessary, may clear the chambers of persons participating in the disturbance. This meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. Councillors, we're going to change the agenda around a little bit and begin with our appeal this evening. So we're going to move to item 11, Appeals AC 2502. Cynthia Hernandez, applicant, appeals the zoning hearing examiner's decision to deny a permit, wall or fence major and a variance of three feet to the maximum three-foot wall height in the front yard for the property located at 3421 Abbey Court Northwest, zoned RT PR 2025, 020042, MZP 2025 00003 and VA 2025 00015. Ms. Cooliton, will you please explain this appeal?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, councillors. The issue in this appeal is whether a wall permit major and a variance should be approved for an existing six-foot tall front and side yard fence that was constructed without a permit located at 3421 Abbey Court Northwest. This is in council district one. The zoning hearing examiner determined that the application should be denied because the applicant failed to satisfy what's called the 20% rule for front yard fences exceeding three feet in height. The 20% rule requires that 20% of the property is within 330 feet and on the same street as the property must also have front yard walls or fences that are taller than three feet in height. The applicant appealed the decision of the ZHE to deny the applications to the city council who referred the appeal to the land use hearing officer and the Luho recommends that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the ZHE's decision to deny the wall permit and variance. In reviewing the ZHE's application of the 20% rule, the Luho found that because there were 15 total properties within 330 feet and on the same street as the property, the applicant must show three properties with taller walls. However, the evidence produced showed there were only two properties with taller walls. The appellant does not dispute the ZHE's conclusions or the evidence in the record that supported the decision to deny the application. Instead, the Luho found that in the appeal, the appellant essentially resubmitted the same evidence she submitted with her application to the ZHE and argued that the fence is necessary to protect the children that she cares for in her daycare business that she operates from the home. So the Luho concluded that the ZHE's finding that the appellant failed to satisfy the 20% rule is supported by substantial factual evidence and should be upheld. The Luho recommends that the appeal be denied and the ZHE's denial of the wall permit and variance request be upheld. And this is the accept or reject stage, so you will not hear from the applicant appellant, but I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
Councillors, would anybody care to make a motion? Or do you have any questions? Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions. I know this is something that's come up with some of the recommendations for changes for fence heights. This has been proposed for the IDO. You know, I don't see the planning director here, but I guess maybe my question is, is that how do we address? There's tons in like in District Three that are over this height, right? And I know it turns into, am I going, is it a stretch? Okay, okay, okay. I got it. Yeah, I just. So tell me what the, sorry, Madam President. What is the rule, the current rule? Maybe that's what.
So currently, Madam President, councillor Penya, the IDO currently allows for front and side yard walls and fences at three feet in height. And then to exceed that, you're required to obtain a wall permit major, which is where the 20% rule kicks in. And so as of right now, the IDO allows for three feet in height.
So, Madam President, so I'm trying to be careful with what I ask. So if there's, you're kind of justified for having it if other neighbors have it?
Madam President and Madam Vice President. It's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Councillors, I will make a motion to accept the Luho recommendation and findings. There's a second from councillor Grouse. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is to accept the Luho recommendation and findings. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Councillor Baca?
Yes.
Councillor Champagne?
Yes.
Councillor Pfebelkorn?
Yes.
Councillor Grapp?
Yes.
Councillor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
No.
President, or I'm sorry, councillor Rogers?
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez?
Hello.
President Bassam?
Yes.
That passes on a 7-2.
All right, councillors, we're going to move back in our agenda to agenda item number three, Proclamations and Presentations. We have none this evening. So next will be Administration, Question and Answer Period. Councillor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a handful of questions tonight. And it's, she smiled anew. Madam President, it's, let me see where I'm gathering her. APD recently did a settlement of, in doing with the academy, a recent lawsuit that settled. And I'm just kind of curious, my question was, where does that settlement funding come from?
Madam President, councillor Champagne, I believe city attorney Lauren Keef is on the, online to be able to respond. She's not online yet.
She might not, I don't know if she knew, I, there was a request by a councillor to move Q and A up on the agenda tonight, so it was a little bit earlier. I don't know if we want to bounce back towards the end of Q and A, if you want councillor. Okay.
Madam President, councillor Champagne, city attorney Lauren Keef is online to respond to your question regarding the recent APD academy case.
Good evening, Ms. Keef.
Good evening.
Councillor, if you want to go ahead and ask the question again?
Yes. Madam President, Ms. Keef, APD recently settled a lawsuit in reference to the academy, the training academy, and I'm kind of curious on where the settlement funding comes from.
Madam President, councillor Champagne, in fact, we took that case to trial. We did not settle the lawsuit. Unfortunately, we also did not prevail at trial. We intend to appeal the verdict. The judge made some legal rulings that we believe are incorrect and that we have some solid grounds for, to appeal. But so, yeah, unfortunately, that was the result. There was a ruling against the city.
So then I'll ask a different question then. If the ruling doesn't, if you're not able to appeal it, where would the funding of the settlement come from?
Okay, so, Madam President, councillor Champagne, the funding comes from the risk fund.
The risk fund, okay. Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Keef.
You're welcome.
If, Madam President, CAO, if it isn't appealed and it does stand that the administration was at fault, and I don't know if you can answer this, but is there any, is there a reprimand that the chief does for like conduct unbecoming or, I don't know. I mean, when I made a mistake, there was always that catchall of conduct unbecoming, you did something that the department doesn't like. If it's found that an officer makes a mistake, there's always an internal investigation and charges, internal charges in the sense of again violating SOP. Is there something in that, in the SOP for the chief that it's found in the settlement or, not in the settlement, but it's found in this trial that he did wrong?
Madam President, councillor Champagne, I'm looking at city attorney Keef, just because I know she's, I want to make sure I don't say anything on record that of course would be an issue for the, for the case. So I just need a nod from her as to whether or not she wants me to respond.
No, I can respond. So if, if it's all right with the councillor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so councillor President, councillor Champagne, I don't think, the verdict doesn't necessarily imply that Chief Medina or anyone at APD did anything wrong. Now, to be clear, so there was an investigation into the conduct of the academy instructors. There was a finding that they had violated SOPs and they were all issued verbal reprimands. The jury's determination that, that that discipline shouldn't have been enacted does not mean that anyone who was involved in the disciplinary process did anything wrong. I mean, I think they all acted in good faith, believing that the conduct in question violated APD's SOPs.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Keef, for that answer. That's awesome. Madam President, my next question, the administration just, and I don't know, Ms. Keef, you might need to stay on because it's probably going to be an answer for you. The administration just announced that it was going into a lawsuit, referenced the money that was not being refunded or not given to the rail trail. This is me just kind of learning even in year two of how the process works, but how does the administration have carte blanche to enter the entire city government into a lawsuit without? Yeah, and it's probably for Ms. Keef, I just don't, when we pass a bill that goes to the mayor's office for signature or veto, how is it that one part can go into a lawsuit without checking with another part?
Sure. So, Madam President, councillor Champagne, under our system, the executive branch does have the authority to decide whether to enter into litigation. And so I do need approval from the CAO and from the mayor, but we do not need approval from the city council unless it's, you know, there are certain, there's an ordinance and there are certain actions, you know, that directly relate to council where I might need their approval. But in terms of the funding, you know, we would have to go to council if we needed new money for the litigation, but if it, if we can rely on someone's existing budget or if I can rely on my existing staff, which in this case, most of the work was done by my staff, and we don't need new money, then we wouldn't be, you know, have a need to go to council for that. So we have to find money within the existing budget in order to do this.
Okay. Madam President, Ms. Keef, does, what's the ordinance that allows the administration or the executive to do that? Do you know right offhand?
Madam President, councillor Champagne, it's really the city charter. In the city charter granting executive power to the mayor.
And does the city charter, and this is again, Madam President, does the city charter also allow the council to go into a lawsuit without? We have the same power?
Madam President, councillor Champagne, yes. If council wanted to enter a lawsuit for its purposes, it would not need approval from the mayor.
Very cool. Like I said, I'm just trying to learn. It was one of those things, when I saw that, I went, huh. So I get to ask those questions. Madam President, a follow-up to the rail trail question, what is the total cost of the rail trail? And I'm confused because this was 11.5 million that was being pulled away and it was said that that's a third of the budget, but I've heard upwards of $90 million in cost. So it's announced that it's a third, we're missing with the 11, but that's, but it's also, I think it was like seven, 11 million per mile, which put it at 90 or 80 million. So can I have clarification on what the actual cost is?
Madam President, councillor Champagne, each segment of the rail trail is distinctly different from others. So the exact estimate has been based, that you've heard at any point, has been estimations based on mileage, but also those change each time we have knowledge and understanding related to that. I'd be happy to provide for you all each segment that has been planned and what the estimated costs are, whether those are based upon actual plans or we can also provide ongoing estimation. So this section was related to the portion that runs from Central to Lomas right along the rail. And I don't know the exact measurement of what this funding was dedicated to, but the raised grant was related to the fact that it is on the rail trail there and a segment that is already, the trail, sorry, the rail is already, or continues to be in use for rail use. So I'd be happy to provide additional information related to that. Off the top of my head, I don't know every segment and the portions that they cost, but, or that they're estimated at at this point. So every portion, as I said, is, is, we have them segmented based upon the conditions that we are rework, renovating and changing. And so in some sections, it's landscaping and other sections, we're putting infrastructure in.
Thank you. Madam President, so is it fair to say that this section of the 11.5 million is going to be $30 million if it's said that it's a third? I mean, it was announced by, by the administration saying this is a third, so.
Madam President, councillor Champagne, I don't, I don't want to answer incorrectly. I apologize. I just, I think that is accurate, that the section, there is a portion that based upon the rail in, impact that is active, that was more costly. I think that this is, that doesn't seem accurate to me in terms of thinking about which section cost, what portion we would have been speaking to when we're talking to that being a thought.
And, and Madam President, I understand that you don't want to give out inaccurate information, but it's, it's put in a press release and gives the opinion or gives the notion that this is a third of the cost and it doesn't say this is a third of the cost of this section, it's, it's not clarified. And yet the public goes, oh, it's only 30 million. It kind of is misleading and that's why I, I'm kind of confused in that sense. So it would be great to be able to give me the, if you could, you know, provide what that 11 million, what section it was going to and what that total cost was because you had to put it out for bid. So you know, and you have an idea, so thank you. Madam President, my last question. I saw that the, the Broken Windows program is coming back and I was kind of curious on how the first batch went and I had a couple of questions about the second. So, and I know the director's here to discuss what the, you don't get to sit down. No, go ahead, no. What the first program did, how we, because we directed $200,000, I think it came out of public safety budget and got moved over to another, another deal to, to get away from the anti-donation clause. And I'm kind of just, how did the first round go?
Director?
Madam President, councillor Champagne, thank you for the question. The first grant, we had a, and please, please tell me if I'm giving you information you're not interested in, but we had a total of 93 applicants. Of those 93, 87 were eligible. The other, doing this math in my head, the other six were not eligible because they were in, not in the city limits, they were in, in the county and reasons like that. The average reimbursement was just south of $2,300 per business. 210 windows were replaced. And as you pointed out, one thing that's really neat about this program is every one of these applicants partnered with APD to do a security survey, which essentially is a site hardening conversation with professionals at APD. You know, if you were to put a light there, if you were to put a camera there, you know, you might see different results. So that, that was the first iteration of the program. The second iteration of the program opened on October 23rd, so it's about two weeks old. Up to today, this morning, we had eight applicants. Of those eight applicants, two applicants have completed the application process and were ready to cut checks. Those checks will be available not this Friday, but this coming Friday. The other six are in various stages of the application process. Five security site hardening surveys have been scheduled. One is yet to be scheduled, so it's, it's moving ahead as, as anticipated, if you will.
Perfect. Madam President, what's the total amount that's allocated this time around?
It is just north of 200,000. It's a funny number, it's 201,500.
Okay. And Madam President, what did, you said that eight people put in, what are the qualifications? Obviously, city limits, is there a certain part of town? I seem to recall something, it was in the first.
So, so any, and this distinction is important, any business within an Albuquerque zip code is eligible, independent of the residence of the business owner, if you will. We are trying to, and I think you're referencing the press release, we are trying to concentrate our efforts on what is referred to as pockets of poverty in the city of Albuquerque, which is a federal designation of various areas in the city.
Okay. What was the motivation to, I'm sorry, Madam President, what was the motivation to bring the program back? Just out of curiosity.
You know, just the success of the first iteration. We, we provided a survey to all of the participants. About 15 participants of the 83 responded to the survey. 100% positive feedback, lots of really positive testimonials. But I also, I think it's, you know, if you look at the philosophical underpinnings of this program, we believe strongly that our micro and small businesses, our mom and pop shops, our main streets businesses really are the backbone of our economy and our small business office is very good and very diligent in providing technical assistance, training, seminars. And this is, this is another way of, of, of supporting those businesses through a tangible thing, right? Your window got broken and we will help you pay for the replacement of that vandalism, that damage that you experienced.
Perfect. It sounds, sounds great. Madam President, I'm sorry, just this came to my head. So, I promise it's my last. Where, how did, how did you get out of the, how did we get out of the anti-donation clause? We moved money from public safety to, to what application?
So I'm going to misuse a term now that you are very familiar with, but I'm going to backpedal from it. I, I think there is this notion of the broken windows theory, but writ light. So this idea that if we can ensure that our neighborhoods are clean, aesthetically pleasing, intact, there, there is some evidence to show that there will be fewer incidents of vandalism. And, and so our, our city attorney provided an opinion to state that this really is a public safety initiative. It is a partnership between our police department and economic development, but really at the core of what we're doing here is making our, our neighborhoods, our communities safer by providing the kind of resources that, that again, in, in terms of broken window, right? We are fixing those windows that otherwise would signal that this is a place that, that there is a lack of care, if you will.
Pocket of poverty, as we put it, yeah.
Ms. Keef might have something to add as well.
Thank you, councillor President, although the director did cover it very well. The, the intent of the program is to reduce blight, which does help reduce crime overall. And, and so that although there is a benefit to the private business, there is a benefit to the city and that's the purpose of the program. But also, as the councillor mentioned earlier, we did include the, the survey and so in order to make recommendations on crime prevention standards, which will also help reduce crime in the city. And so we, we had the property owners agree to that survey and agree to look into making these changes. So there was, you know, an agreement between the parties.
Thank you, Ms. Keef. So they, so basically we went out in agreement and said, hey, if you'll take the survey and take our opinions, we'll pay you for it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Director.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Baca is next, but until he returns, we're going to go to councillor Grouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few questions. I'm not sure who, I think this is to, Madam, every, it's about the Albuquerque Progress Report. Every other year, the Indicators Progress Commission publishes a progress report. The 2024 report should have come out by now. Has the biannual survey been completed? Madam CAO?
Madam President, councillor Grouse, sorry, I'm just pulling up my notes because I realized I didn't push, I didn't print them and I apologize. So, Madam President, councillor Grouse, the report process was completed. However, we have been having difficulties with this committee, this commission in making quorum. So the committee that does the review, so that they can review the information, go through the process of which the ordinance indicates that they would follow, has had difficulty making quorum to meet. They were able to make quorum and we, that was through filling of seats and ensuring that we had appropriate participation in July when the draft was available for them to review. They've been working through that report, the 2024 report, to determine, they have questions and concerns as to how they can, how the process works for them to inform that review and ensure that it is the information that they felt that both the questions as well as the outcomes could be analyzed. My understanding is that the commission has also been paying attention to the concerns related to how their ordinance is written and if it matches to the actualities of how they're trying to operate and looking at the possibilities of appropriately refining the ordinance for the IPC. And so they are currently in discussions with the organization that, that recreated the draft report for them in hopes that they can assist both in that ordinance language and how the questions are written and the, and the analysis is done, but also to finalize their, their review and determining how they want to, they would publish and bring that forward to us.
Thank you, Madam President. How many people serve on this commission?
Madam President, councillor Grouse, I don't think I have that information in front of me as to the current numbers, but I can give that.
Okay. How often do they meet?
Madam President, councillor, I think that it is meant to be a quarterly meeting. However, when they are, my understanding is, is when they're working on the, on the work, on this, they may meet more often to work through that report.
I would think if it's, if now they have quorum, they, they have some business to do, they need to meet more often to get the report done so it's timely. When can we expect it to come out?
Madam President, councillor Grouse, we are working with them to support them, to keep, get, to keep them moving and support them in ensuring that they make quorum. I don't have an estimate, but we have the intent to get that from them so that we would have an understanding of when that publication, when we would be bringing that forward to city council.
Would that be before the end of the year?
Um, Madam President, Counselor Grouse, I will absolutely encourage that that is what we would like as well.
The reason I ask is the business community, um, relies on this report to make their plans, and so, you know, it's, it's, it is an important one that, that we need. And, um, it's six months late now, or almost six months late, and we like to be on time, right?
Madam President, Counselor Grouse, we all agree, it's very valuable information for us to be able to act from.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, Madam President, um, I have a few more questions. Um, this is for AFR. Somebody from AFR.
Uh, Madam President, um, my understanding is that, I, I will read, um, the response into the record.
Okay. Uh, we used to get monthly reports on calls for service from AFR. Um, I realized that we haven't seen one of those reports since October of last year, and they're very valuable. Like, we did, you know, we got lots of information out of them, and, um, and, um, I think that they're, they have been missed. So I wanted to know what happened to them? Why haven't we received them?
Uh, Madam President, Counselor Grouse, my understanding is that you and, um, that you were able to have a intera, a communication with, um, Chief Harameo related to this, but I will, for the benefit of the public and, um, the rest of Council, um, share what she provided, which is that the firefighter that was doing this work, that, uh, published this monthly report had, uh, retired. Uh, he was also the secondary PIO, so they have not backfilled that position to prioritize field staffing, uh, during this time. Um, in the interim, the PIO has been sharing the information that many of these stats on social media that goes into a month, and that was going into the monthly report, and that data, um, was in the monthly report, is still being collected and is available upon request, and this, actually, this has been requested by councilors, um, periodically as well. AFR is currently going through the process to hire a civilian position, and one of their duties will be to publish the monthly report. In addition, a summary of two thousand twenty-five is in AFR's annual report, the monthly reports will start again being published in January of twenty-six and coming out monthly.
Thank you. Thank you. These, these, um, reports, they can help us with budget, you know, trying to plan for the future and so forth, and so, um, they're not just things that you guys prepare and we ask for, there's, there's a good reason for them, so, thank you. And my final set of questions, Madam President, is for our City Clerk. Hi, Mr. Watson, thank you for being here. Um, Mr. Watson, P. twenty-five dash seven, passed in City Council in May, in March of this year, and it did not get placed on the ballot. Um, can you, uh, the newspaper said you were going to review the processes to make sure it doesn't happen again, I know that it was an error, not intentional. Uh, what was the result of that review?
Counsel President Hassan and Counselor Grouse, um, so I have reviewed our process about, um, legislation and proclamations, and, um, I think I've identified a way in which proclamations are different from other legislation. With other legislation, it's immediately apparent in Legistar and AM Legal that, um, the specific act which is asked of clerk's office has occurred, because it's apparent that it's been published in AM Legal, or that, you know, what other action is required has been taken. And I think, um, resolutions, it's not apparent to, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily know looking at Legistar whether it's been sent to the county, and so I, um, that was the error that occurred, was that the legislation was not sent to the county, and so we, um, my initial, um, solution for that is to, um, I've amended the memorandum that I send back to Council following the enactment process and to reflect the results of what my office has done, um, because at, at present, the memo, I send a memo back to Council every time we process legislation. And the, um, historically, that memorandum has just reflected that we received the legislation, um, and going forward, that memo will reflect that the legislation, whatever we've done with it. So if it's an ordinance, it will reflect that we've enacted it. Um, if it's a resolution that requires we send letters out to the legislatures, it will reflect that that has been done, and in the case of propositions, it will reflect that, um, you know, that they've been sent to the county. Um, I do think if, um, there's an opportunity to potentially work with Council Services and add a field to Legistar, um, and reflect sort of an other type of action, um, and so that, that we could update that as well, and so that it would be publicly apparent, um, if there was another action that's required, that we have done that as well.
Okay, thank you. Very good, thank you. Um, this, um, question that didn't get, make it on the ballot was important, that, um, only the voters could answer. So now, what, where do we, where do we go from here with this particular question?
That's a sort of, a mix of illegal, procedural, and, um, codification question for my part. Um, I, I do not, I think after extensively looking into this, I do not believe there is a way to put that question on a ballot as currently drafted. Um, I do not, I would defer to legal and Council Services on whether there's a way to amend it, uh, I don't know that, um, eh, or if it just needs to be repassed in the future, um, I, I, I don't know the answer to those questions.
Can it go on the runoff ballot?
Um, Counsel President Hassan, Counselor Grouse, it cannot.
It cannot? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions? Okay, thank you for that.
There, are you, well, there are more questions, I know, for the clerk, but are you, do you still have additional questions?
Nope, I'm good, I'm good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Watson.
Counselor Baca, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President, I don't really have any questions, the, Mr. Watson and I have spoken numerous times, obviously, I was extremely upset when this, when this took place, I think this is a, a, a pretty big, big mess-up, although it happened probably in the least consequential way possible. You know, not too many people were worried about that particular ballot question. Um, if it had been a geo bond or a person's name, obviously, this would be a much, much bigger, or our ballot initiatives last year. Um, that said, it just, yeah, um, disappointed, but we have an opportunity to fix this, so it doesn't happen again. Um, and maybe we need to run something from our side, potentially, so something has to come to us before it gets to the clerk for review, or something along those lines, but, so I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Counsel President and Counselor Baca, and I, I do apologize for this, and it was an error, um, and, you know, I think it's, uh, a useful opportunity for us to review the process, and so I'm, I'm happy to work with Council Services on that and, um, stand for any, any process review that's necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watson. You know what, further questions, Counsel Baca? Okay. Next is Counsel Rogers tonight.
Thank you, Madam President, my question is, um, for our CAO. Um, in February of two thousand twenty-five, we, um, reached out regarding our AED machines, um, specifically the one that I found in our office that was not functional. Um, at the time, we worked with the, your, the administration, and we were told that the AI seven forty-two, the administrative, um, instruction on how we handle AEDs, um, would be updated, I looked on the website and still has not been updated, um, and it's actually, the last time it was updated was twenty seventeen, um, and so I just wanted to follow up, um, about where, when can our office expect to have a proper working AED machine, and when will, I also noticed that CPR training was rolled out for asking, uh, employees that they wanted to get CPR training, but no AED training was included in that, so, one, when will we get our working AED? Two, when will employees be trained on how to properly use an AED?
Uh, Madam President, Counselor Rogers, thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, real quick, just for the folks watching, an AED is an automated external defibrillator, just so public know what we're talking about.
Uh, Madam President, Counsel Rogers, I, I appreciate that this is incredibly important, it's incredibly important to me as well. Um, the, I, I will say, I'm not sure why the, um, AI is not published as updated, because we did update it, um, to ensure that, um, Metro Security would be taking a primary role in maintenance and oversight of the AEDs throughout city property, um, and then in partnership with departments, uh, that have, you know, ownership or oversight on a facility, if that is, uh, additionally, in, uh, City Hall, they are installing two operating AEDs in publicly accessible places per floor, so that, uh, we change, we have changed from the previous, uh, practice, which included AEDs could be placed in a place within a department that made, that that department was aware where it was and knew how to access it, but if, um, the public may not know where that is and be able to ac, be able to access that. So the new plan is for installations in public locations, and then, uh, as they are installed, we will be providing training for everyone on each floor as to where they are, how to operate them, and to be, uh, fully, uh, aware of them and, uh, able to use them, including signage within the floors to, uh, tell the public, uh, which direction they can find those AEDs. Um, additionally, um, that, uh, AEDs are on-site, uh, today, um, and we do have, um, those in a cycle of, uh, review, which is why Metro Security is the department that is going to be overseeing the program. In the past, it had been fire and other departments, um, and Metro Security, uh, patrols every area of the city, uh, buildings, and that gives us an opportunity to include that, uh, in the meantime. The new equipment that they will be installing will have the most up-to-date, um, equipment that allows for, um, remote monitoring of these, um, and so Metro Security will know if any one of these devices has a low battery or a maintenance issue or any other can, uh, issues. So I will get, uh, more information about the exact installation dates, they were checking into it since you and I, um, last spoke, so that we know, you know, when each floor would be installed, and we would be moving forward with this.
Thank you, Madam President, and we did, we talked about this, but since then, I still have not received an answer on when. So when can I expect a working AED machine in Council Services?
Madam President, Counsel Rogers, we are talking with the vendor to know exact installation date, um, and they're, they're gonna give me that answer, so that we can, can, uh, share that with you all.
Thank you, Madam President, so we've already, do we have a purchase ordered for these already?
Uh, Madam President, Counsel Grouse, yes, uh, Counsel Rogers, yes, we have, we are fully engaged with the vendor for installation, they, or, equipment ordered, and, and my understanding is we are just waiting here for installation date.
Okay. And so when can I expect to hear back?
Madam President, Counsel Rogers, I'll get you an answer tomorrow about what, why we don't have an answer yet, um, and when we'll have that for you.
Okay, 'cause we, our team has a quote, we're ready to go and buy our own if I do not hear from the administration by, let's say, Friday. Um, when we will have one, then we're just gonna move forward and purchase one, 'cause it is not okay for us not to have a working AED in our machine, especially after what we've dealt with in our office.
Uh, Madam President, Counsel Rogers, my understanding was one was supposed to be delivered to Council Services on the day that you and I spoke. Um, I'm not sure if that occurred?
I, thank you, Madam President, no, I, that's why I'm asking. And I'm not gonna, like, this is, for me, a huge issue. It's a liability for the city, first of all, it's a huge risk for us to not have adequately trained folks with these things, um, and so for us to protect our employees, we need to have these, and the public that could potentially be in our, in our offices. So our staff has a quote, we're ready to go and purchase one, if you need, if we need to work with the administration to speed it up, but from February to now, to not have this done and ready to go is not acceptable. So I would love to, to get an answer on when we can receive one, and if, if it's not, we'll have one installed by Friday, then we'll order our own and do our own, like, and who's gonna do the training? 'Cause I'm concerned AFR, and just so everyone knows, AFR said, no, they did not want to do this, even though the AI is, it says AFR, is usually the people, I mean, we have a fire department, they check our, um, fire extinguishers, the same time they check with fire extinguishers, they could be checking the AED. And I have faith in William Durand, I know he managed the program for us at CNM when I worked there, so I'm, I'm, I'm confident he can do it, but I'm just, I just, this is a liability and a risk for the city if we don't get this fixed. So please, let's make it a bigger priority and get the AI updated, or can you send me a copy of the AI that, that is already updated, um, so that we can make sure we follow that in our office as well? Thank you. And then my next question is around, um, vouchers and HHH. So we have, several councilors have met with a provider for vouchers that says that they are now at a point, because of city funding, that we are gonna have to displace folks if we don't figure something out, um, for, uh, these particular voucher holders. And so I know you probably can't answer now, 'cause HHH, I don't see anyone from HHH here, um, but I would like to get some answers on what's happening with those particular vouchers.
Madam President, Counsel Rogers, happy to look into the, the specific scenario.
Thank you, Madam President, I'll send you the information that we received from the provider, and I'm being vague, on purpose, public, um, for a reason, so, um, we don't want the provider to, to, um, we want to create safety for the provider also, so I'll be happy to send you that info, so we can figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions for the admin? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the Journal, I move approval of the October twentieth Journal. There's a second by Madam Vice President. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes. Hello.
Counsel Champagne?
Yes.
Counsel Fablecorn?
Yes.
Counsel Grouse?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counsel Rogers?
She's fine.
Yes. Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
On communications and introductions, Counsel Grouse?
Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R. two oh one on tonight's agenda for action. Our two oh one is preserving the name, Juniper Flats, for the property located at twenty-five Hotel Circle Northeast.
There's a second by Counsel Champagne. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes.
Counsel Champagne?
Yes.
Counsel Fablecorn?
Yes.
Counsel Grouse?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counsel Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counselors, any other changes to the letter? Seeing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction?
Second.
There's a second by Counsel Champagne, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes.
Counsel Champagne?
Yes.
Counsel Fablecorn?
Yes.
Counsel Grouse?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counsel Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counselors, any other changes to the letter? Seeing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction?
Second.
There's a second by Counsel Champagne, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes.
Counsel Champagne?
Yes.
Counsel Fablecorn?
Yes.
Counsel Grouse?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counsel Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counselors, any other changes to the letter? Seeing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction?
Second.
There's a second by Counsel Champagne, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes.
Counsel Champagne?
Yes.
Counsel Fablecorn?
Yes.
Counsel Grouse?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counsel Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counselors, any other changes to the letter? Seeing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction?
Second.
There's a second by Counsel Champagne, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes.
Counsel Champagne?
Yes.
Counsel Fablecorn?
Yes.
Counsel Grouse?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counsel Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving on to reports of committees, Counsel Champagne?
Madam President, the Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and reports out the following items in the matter of EC four six seven, EC four eight five, EC four nine five, and EC four nine six, that they be approved, in the matter of EC four seven seven, that it be approved and acted upon at the meeting at which it is reported.
Madam President, the Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, October 27th, 2025, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC467, EC485, EC495, and EC496, that they be approved. In the matter of EC477, that it be approved and acted upon at the meeting at which it is reported. In the matter of OC47 and OC48, that the receipt be noted. In the matter of R184, 186, 190, 193, and 200, that they do pass. And in the matter of R185 and R187, that they do pass as amended. And I make a motion to accept the committee report.
There's a second by Counselor Grou. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grub?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving on to deferrals and withdrawals from financial instruments, Counsel Grou.
Madam President, O99 is authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Albuquerque, New Mexico Gross Receipts Tax Revenue Bonds in two series in aggregate principal amount not to exceed, not to exceed $47 million, Gross Receipts Tax Project Revenue Improvement Revenue Bonds, Juniper Flats Project, Series 2025A, in the maximum principal amount of $18 million, and to the Gross Receipts Tax Refunding Revenue Bonds, Series 2025B, in the maximum principal amount of $29 million to finance. Move deferral to November 17th.
There's a second by Madam Vice President. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grub?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving on to deferrals and withdrawals from final action, RA7, amending the City Council Rules of Procedure, Article 1, Section 8, regarding addressing meetings, and Article 3, Section 4E, regarding the Order of Business. I move withdrawal.
Second.
There's a second by Counsel Grou. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grub?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counselors, we're going, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals at this time? All right, moving on to the consent agenda, Counsel Champagne.
Yes, Madam President, I would like to pull item E, EC519, off the consent agenda. EC519 is the mayor's recommendation to approve and authorize the contract amendment of Lotus Engineering and Sustainability LLC.
And Counsel Champagne, we'll go ahead and pull that. Do you have another one?
Yes, it's a sibling bill of EC520 off the consent agenda, and that is the mayor's recommendation to approve and authorize the contract amendment of Maro Riordan Wilkinson Miller DBA planned collaboration.
All right, counselors, are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none, for those individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. I move approval of the consent agenda. There's a second by Counselor Grou. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grub?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving back to EC519, Counsel Champagne.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really have a question. When I read this, it kind of, I read that it was a four-county input, that this was a program, and please don't get me wrong, I like the idea of the program and such, but it was a four-county input and distribution, and I'm just kind of curious on if we're working with four other counties, and this is a grant, and the money's being funneled for the city, are we allowed to use our city money to give it away to different counties?
Madam CEO? Madam President, Counsel Champagne, our sustainability officer that knows this very well is like walking down the hall to get here to answer your questions, and I don't want, because I don't want to miss, miss the, I am not sure why she's not here, because we texted and said you had pulled it from the consent agenda.
Madam President, I think 520 is, it's like sibling bill, they're kind of one and the same, so it's a question of beef or bull.
Madam President, Counsel Champagne and Simon, our sustainability officer can speak to both items, 519 and 520, and I think the question is specifically about our partnership with other counties and how the funding can go from us to them in this process.
Yes, Madam President, if you would just kind of give me a little bit, when I read it, I was a little confused, because I get, and kind of just give an explanation, if we applied for a grant, and we have a better chance of getting that grant if we incorporate the other counties, the surrounding counties, and say, hey, the group of us want to do this, and that improves our chance of getting the grant, but I'm a little curious that if it's awarded to the City of Albuquerque for, say, trees, for tree planting, but we're going to go to Sandoval County and spend City, Albuquerque City money to do work in Sandoval County, how does that work?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Counsel Champagne, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, the original grant that we are piggybacking this on to is a regional four-county grant. It is a climate action planning grant that will apply to Sandoval, Valencia, Torrance, and Bernario County. The USDA Forest Grant is specifically for the City of Albuquerque. Now, we are asking for input because all of these tree planting initiatives help our greenhouse gas reduction goal. It just affects the entire region, you know, these gases just don't stop at the border. Climate action is really a regional issue. So we did allow the other counties to weigh in, but this tree planting initiative is for the City of Albuquerque.
Okay, so the trees, and again, don't get me wrong, I agree with the program. About two weeks ago, I went out and planted trees with, New Mexico Tree, it was great, and we need it. Knowing that 85% of the trees are on private and public, private property, that we need to make sure that, you know, we have plenty of them for, for that. So none of the trees that we're getting in this grant are going to go to other counties. And the only reason I ask that, because constituents will ask me, why is our taxpaying money, or, you know, stuff that's going through our city benefiting other counties? Why is that possible? How does that work? And that's why I just want to be able to give them the right answer and clarification to what we're doing.
Gotcha, thank you. And Madam President, Counsel Champagne, I don't believe there's any taxpayer dollars from the City of Albuquerque, so that's one thing. This was a $5 million grant we got from USDA Forest. So that's, that said, whether or not the trees are planted outside the city, they, as far as I know, they will not be planted outside the city. In fact, one of the reasons we are bringing in Lotus especially is to provide a vulnerability assessment, so that we make sure that we are hitting those communities that really need the tree canopy, where we've seen diminished tree canopy, where we've seen increased in the heat island effect, and those are city areas, those are urban areas with lots of asphalt, places where we've seen trees decline, and it's really an environmental justice issue, so we're trying to get the trees in the places where people can benefit from them the most.
Madam President, that's one thing I did learn when we were pushing for water conservancy, is that when you zero-scape your front yard, it actually increases the heat around your house by like five degrees, because the grass isn't there to absorb that heat from the sun, so you, you know, and then, and then turn, your house is hot, and you turn on your AC more, and so on, so it's an interesting cycle of life. That answers my questions, thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor, if you want to go ahead and make a motion, there is another question as well.
Madam President.
We need to make a motion for EC519?
519, yes, I'll make a motion to accept EC519 or approve it.
There's a motion for approval, is there a second? There's a second by Counsel Grou. Counsel Rogers, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam President. Is this the grant that was tied to Justice 40 by any chance from the USDA? We just, we were working on something like this inequity and inclusion when I was there, and it was a long timeout, and it was USDA tied to Justice 40. I'm just wondering if this is the culmination of that work.
Madam President, Counsel Rogers, I wasn't there when this grant was first, when we first applied for this grant. However, if it was applied for during the Biden administration, all federal grants did have to abide by Justice 40 principles. I would assume that that is the case. Those principles do not apply any longer for federal grants.
Thank you, Madam President, exactly where I was going with that. So is the City of Albuquerque going to change course, even though it's not required anymore?
Oh, Madam President, Counsel Rogers, thank you for the question. In fact, we are standing firm with our, with our Justice 40 Oversight Coordinating Committee. We work very closely with that committee on both the CPRG grant, which is our regional grant, and we will work with this grant. This is one of the reasons that we are piggybacking, because we have built trust with the community. We have a really wonderful community task force that was appointed by the Justice 40 Oversight Coordinating Committee, and we want to make sure that we continue to work with that, with that group, and have that group advise us on the best places for the tree planting.
Thank you, Madam President. So does that group still meet? Because I used to get information about that group, and I haven't gotten any information about that group in some time.
Madam President and Counsel Rogers, are you referring to the Community Task Force or the Justice 40 Group?
Both.
The Community Task Force is still in place. We are still meeting because we have not finished our Comprehensive Climate Action Plan, which is due to the EPA on December 1st. The Justice 40 Oversight Committee is definitely still in place. We have a new staff-appointed director, it's still in OEI. I know that the chair has had some health issues, but yes, we are still active and we are still in touch with the members of that Oversight Coordinating Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. So this contract for this is for them to do just a survey and look at where we should be putting, planting the trees?
Counselor President and Counsel Rogers, yes. Essentially, that's, that's the case. It's a technical assistance grant that helps us do a vulnerability assessment. We will look at where we have high heat areas and, you know, where the need is. Then, Planned will help us with the community outreach.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just interested in us paying for this services. I was at the infrastructure conference that's happening, the state infrastructure conference that's happening right now at the Convention Center this week. First of all, I was shocked that there was not a lot of city employees at all at this conference, right across the street at the Convention Center. And at that conference, they had a South Central Climate Adaption Science Center and the Southwest Environment Finance Center, who had statewide data that was offered for free to municipalities that already mapped out the heat index. And so I just, I wonder if we could, I mean, this is a grant, so this is good, we, we're not paying necessarily for these services, but just wondered if there was some collaborating that we can do with folks that already have these maps, they already have, they could probably tell us exactly where the trees go. I also know that we use District 6 heavily in that grant. The original grant in OEI, we use District 6 a lot because of the heat index in my district. So I would love to see the plan once this is done on where those trees will be planted, because my district was used heavily to be able to get the grant, and so the trees should go where you said, not you personally, but the department said that they should when we applied for the grant. We also had a lot of that data to even apply for the grant, so I'm hoping that that can be also used, because we've already, we know where the trees should be. So I'm all for technical assistance, but I think the community has been screaming about this, especially, we're having the same conversation with the State Fair, TID, and all of the redevelopment and reimagining of the State Fair. The governor had a whole bunch of heat index data that she shared with that provider, so just know we have a plethora of information, let's just get the trees in, I think is the biggest point. Thank you.
Counselors, we are on EC519. Any other questions? The motion is for approval. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grub?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counsel Champagne, you pulled EC520 off of consent?
Yes, Madam President, make a motion for approval.
There's a motion for approval and a second by Counsel Baca on EC520. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Pfeebelkorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grub?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving on to announcements, Counsel Champagne.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Meeting on Monday, November 10th, at 5:00 PM in the, I don't think there's going to be a meeting. There's nothing on the agenda, ma'am. Is there? Okay, okay, thank you. I'm confused, I must be thinking about another meeting. So there will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, November 10th, at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers Basement Level of the Albuquerque Government Center. This will be a hybrid meeting.
Counsel Pfeebelkorn?
Madam President, there will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:00 PM here in Chambers, and it will be a hybrid meeting.
All right. There are no financial instruments. We already handled our appeal. We're moving on to general public comment. Members of the public can provide live public comments to the council in person or virtually if they have signed up for public comment per the instructions published on the agenda and on our website Friday. The public comment ground rules are that each participant will have two minutes to present this evening. Comments are to be addressed to the counselors only through the council president, and any disruptive conduct will result in removal from the meeting. There is a two-minute time limit, and a bell will ring to indicate your time is up. Mr. Cornelius, if you'll call the name of our first speaker, and if you are on deck, please start making your way down to the front.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first speaker is Francesco Artist, followed by Anami Das. If you want to be the tip of the spear of law enforcement, then you can't break the laws while wrongfully claiming to be above the law. You can't take away immunity from our heroes with a badge and a gun who make split-second life-or-death decisions while you sit behind a desk with all the time in the world to not break the laws, claiming that the laws don't apply to you. God bless the boots on the ground. Swear to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and New Mexico, so help you God. Top Albuquerque leadership in willful violation of the oath of office, notice that she left the room right now, including but not limited to breaking the law to cover up that laws were broken while harboring criminals from federal authorities in violation of, including but not limited to, city policy and local, state, and federal laws, which forbids silence while turning a blind eye to malfeasance in the matter of Mayor Keller's illegal wall. I've submitted to each of you a packet with more information, and I have a packet as well for Director of Council Services. Thank you. Anami Das, followed by Letz Otto.
Hi, y'all. So with the extension that the governor put on SNAP benefits, we got an extra 10 days before the apocalypse takes one more step forward. With that, there's going to be an increase in traffic accidents, homicide, theft, property damage, violent crime, nonviolent crime, because that's what happens when people are hungry. If you want to deal with that, rather than like having a crackdown from the police, I suggest putting things like the Convention Center's new catering company to good use and like feeding people, or having a partnership with like CNN to also feed people. Like, getting food to people is going to be very, very big, because we already had people who were starving to death. We already had single mothers skipping meals so that their kids can eat, and now they're going to have even fewer resources to do anything. I, it's unfortunate that, that comment alone is not enough to really like force action, so to get the administration's attention. So to get the administration's attention, during the time between now and the runoff election, there's going to be an increase in crime that could be prevented by providing food for people. So hopefully, the city chooses to do so. Thank you.
Letz Otvo, followed by Brick Jonasie.
Hang on one second, Mr. Cornelius. Counselor Rogers?
Thank you. I just wanted to just respond on some things we're doing in District 6. We are working, trying to figure out where we can pull other funding from to get to our social service centers so that they can beef up food box production. We're working with childcare development centers, daycares, schools to try to stand up some. Working, trying to do the church circuits to try to get more of them to do food boxes. On, if you just Google District 6 CABQ and click on food insecurity, we've been listing as many resources as we can put there to try to help. We're grasping at all the straws to try to figure out how to get more resources out for food. So please go to that site. Just again, Google CABQ District 6, click on Projects, Food Insecurity. There's a map that you can see where in our district people are feeding folks, hot meals, food boxes, and restaurants that have added to per parent, giving free meals to kids. So at least it's a resource, but also I'm gonna be looking at what we can do as a team here for just some emergency funding for food. So thank you for, for raising that, but District 6, we're definitely taking this seriously and working with everyone we can to try to get more food out there. So thank you for bringing it up.
Mr. Cornelius?
Letz Otvo, followed by Brick Jonasie.
Madam President, council members. I'd like to remind you that sometime in March of this year, there was a gentleman that we associate with. We're, we're big on the First Amendment. We're big on the Second Amendment. We're big on human rights. We do understand that the city was put under the DOJ's notice with their Police Department on various issues surrounding human rights. You folks were put on notice in March of this year about the use of sirens and the use of horses up on the sidewalk. There was a time, not two meetings ago, where it seemed to like that had been somewhat taken care of, but in fact, the horses were just utilized at the fair. Last week, last weekend, I had the opportunity to go downtown, Third Street. And it's, the police are now seeming to wanna use the security staff and just allow the security staff to move people from the sidewalk. And as you well know, some of, one of the city officials was kinda moved along too. And it troubles me that someone that has signed an oath to uphold people's rights wants to just be willy-nilly and go along because a police officer's asking him to clear the sidewalk. Why are we using horses up on the sidewalk? It's against the APD policy for the mounted units to even be on the sidewalk. Yes, they can cross an intersection to get to, across the sidewalk to get to where they have to go, but they're not supposed to be just marching down the sidewalk, moving people. That's creating actually more of a problem than just allowing the people to come out into the empty street, get their meal, sit in their car, and go home when it's time to go home.
Brick Jonasie, followed by Tad Nyumitski.
Madam President, Counselors, yeah, so, yeah, the horse-mounted units downtown. Some other things, APD seem, seems to really not understand what their oath is, which is to uphold our rights. Right across the chest, it says press. Sometimes I don't wear this, but it really shouldn't even matter if I have it. Yeah, I went downtown. The horses are up on the sidewalk again. You still got the car driving up on the sidewalk with the sirens blaring. Also, prior restraint. I had my camera set, filming a scene. I walk over away from the, the camera. I look back. There's a huge spotlight off of a vehicle from a police officer that's just shined it directly into my camera. One, that's prior restraint. Number two, it's gonna damage my lens. It will damage my eye if it goes into my eye. I walked back over. I took the camera. I moved it about 20 feet over. I saw the sergeant. I said, okay, well, I'm gonna go talk to the sergeant about it. I said, Sergeant, the man moved his, moved his spotlight into my camera. And as I pointed out to him, I'm looking, he's moving the light directly back over to my camera where I have moved it 20 feet over. It's not just prior restraint, it's damaging my lens, right? My job is press. This is what I do. You guys have a job to do. I have a job to do. Those officers have a job to do. Let's work together, solve these issues, right? Prior restraint, horses on the sidewalk, sirens blaring, it's not a good look, and it's gonna find you in a lawsuit.
Tad Nyumitski, followed by Mervyn Tilden.
Thank you. My name, Tad Nyumitski. So many issue. I left other issue push on the side. What got me, traffic, gents. We'll talk about it later. But took me 40 minutes to get from Wyoming and Copper here to downtown. And I was late, but I got here shortly after eight. Now, another issue. Here is, we have other side of the door on the west side. Three handicap parking spaces. I wanna bring it to city administration, because council won't do nothing. City employee taking old parking cars in this handicap spaces, taking all these handicap spaces all day long. So that's total disrespect to handicap people. For these people who come do the business, he needed handicap space for 10, 15 minutes. I just gave you, but not all day. Election. Texas passed the law. You too, in order to vote, to vote, you have to be US citizen. What about New Mexico? I was at TDI, ask. She said, no, we have, that's, we cannot ask if you legal or illegal.
Thank you, Mr. Nyumitski.
Senting goes with election.
Your time is up, sir.
Mervyn Tilden, followed by Victoria Lovato Montoya. Victoria Lovato Montoya, followed by Courtney Montoya. Courtney Montoya, followed by Leo Ortiz.
The People's Forum, they're right outside. Come talk to the people. That's all I have.
Leo Ortiz, followed by Miguel Alvarez. Miguel Alvarez, followed by Nicole Finch on Zoom.
I'm here to talk about the mayor election. I don't know Mr. White, but I do know Mr. Keller. He was on TV saying that he did this, he did that. The buyer, the bio park on Central and the boxing gym was developed back in the 80s, way before Keller even showed up. The only thing that he had done was help the immigrants from getting picked up by ICE. But the other thing that he's been doing is that scam on the cameras. These cameras do not detect people that if they're under the influence, that they got warrants, or getting charged for careless and reckless driving, and also property and human endangerment. We need more cops. Come on, state police, why don't you come on down and clean house, because these police officers aren't doing a darn thing for us. We need new people in the city as, as mayor. We need new people in the city as city counselors so we can get things done for us. We got different rights than other people that we want, and we need to start living the way we are supposed to live instead of wondering who's gonna run over us. We need more help.
Nicole Finch on Zoom.
Madam President, Counselors, I'm Nicole Finch from the Library Advisory Board. We had a pretty exciting election yesterday. Election Day and civic participation makes me feel good about my community. The overwhelming support for the library bond on yesterday's ballot shows that the library is an important and beloved part of that community. The community needs the library. The library system needs the main library branch, where all the administrative functions are performed. And the main library branch needs a new HVAC system. That heater and cooler is wheezing along at 50 years of age, and we need to replace it before it completely breaks and forces a shutdown of the entire branch and brings operations to a halt. I greatly appreciate the support we've gotten so far from city, county, and state legislators, and we will keep working to get commitments from everyone to support this vital community hub. Thank you.
Madam President, I'm not finding Joe Conkens on Zoom, so that concludes general public comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We will move on. We have no approvals this evening, so landing on final actions, Counselor Feeblecorn, O-98.
Thank you, Madam President. O-98 is amending the traffic code and the sidewalk ordinance to improve protections for bicyclists, pedestrians, and other vulnerable road users, and amending the automated speed enforcement ordinance to direct revenue to Vision Zero traffic safety initiatives. I move a due pass.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Groun. Counselor Feeblecorn, open.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, we, we were close to voting on this at the last meeting, and we had to defer for a technicality. But this is the first time that we have updated our traffic code in 50-plus years to make sure that we are protecting everyone that uses the roads, not just those that drive. And so I do have a few amendments. If you would like for me to move those now.
Please do. Amendment A?
Thank you, Madam President. Amendment A is on page four, line seven. We're amending the definition of pedestrian. Hopefully, we're gonna put this on the screen so people can see it.
Sorry, just, I said A. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Counselor. We'll call this amendment number one. While they pull that up.
Yes. Okay, so amendment number one, we are amending the definition of pedestrian, and we are inserting in, in two places within the bill what personal assistive mobility device is. I will move the amendment and then explain it.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Groun. Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is really to make sure that we are complying with ADA. And so we took a little extra time to get this one right, because we needed to reach out to a lot of disability experts and, and make sure that we got this one right, and everyone is agreed on it now, that this is the correct language to ensure that we are not taking away any rights of anyone who needs a mobility device, but we're also keeping everyone safe. And so I would urge support on this one.
Counselors, any questions on amendment number one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Yes.
Counselor Groun?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penia?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Counselor Feeblecorn, amendment number two, labeled B in our packet.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna move floor amendment number two. This one is on page 17, lines six through 17. Change the definition from prohibited pedestrian to prohibited vulnerable road user crossing. This goes through A and B, so in A, we're gonna say vulnerable road users shall not cross a roadway at any place except in a crosswalk, except for operators of bicycles, e-bikes, or powered micro mobility devices acting under the provisions of ROA 1994, Chapter 8, Article 3, Part 3, bicycles. Vulnerable road users, except for operators of bicycles, e-bikes, and powered micro mobility devices operating under that provision, should not cross an unmarked, uncontrolled, unsigned crosswalk or intersection where at one of the next two adjacent crosswalks or intersections within 600 feet, traffic control signals are present. I'll move it.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Groun. Counselor Champagne?
Madam President, just a question for the sponsor. Why cross off "shall" and put "should"?
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Madam President, so this is the section of the, of the bill that we heard a lot of advocates last time saying that they had some concerns about. And so we worked with Bike ABQ, Miss Dolan from the mayor's office, worked with them to come up with this proposal. We're trying to discourage people from crossing in the middle of the block, but we are not saying "shall not," so it's not a criminal offense. That is the, the language choice on this.
Counselors, any other questions? Counselor Feeblecorn, a close?
Urgent support.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
No.
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Yes.
Counselor Groun?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penia?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes on an 8-1 vote.
Counselor Feeblecorn, if it's all right with you, let's go to public comment.
Madam President, it's fine with me. I believe there's some more amendments that are not mine.
No, I don't think there's any more that I know of right now on this bill. Is there any others?
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and go to public comment. Mr. Cornelius?
Thank you, Madam President. First up, we have Melinda Montoya, followed by Diana Zamora.
Good evening, President Hassan and council members. My name is Melinda Montoya. I'm Kayla Van Lanningham's mother. I've become a local fixture as well. I would like to start by just expressing gratitude that the mayor's office and Councilwoman Feeblecorn heard my concerns and investigated this code. If this code existed in its current form, I truly believe Kayla would still be with me today. I also believe that we would have a better driving culture, and we wouldn't be leading the nation as having the worst drivers and the most pedestrian and vulnerable road user deaths. This is an important foundational change that'll elevate our code to other peer cities, creating safer streets. So I hope going forward, there are plans in place to review this code, either through regular review process or having standing triggers for review, such as new infrastructure that does not exist in the code. And our review really shouldn't be reactive, as it was in Kayla's case, because we can't let another 50 years lapse and people lose lives and have no protection. So I really hope for your support that this ordinance gets passed and we really start pipping. Thank you.
Diana Zamora, followed by Tad Nyumitski.
Good evening, Madam President Hassan and members of the city council. My name is Diana Zamora. I'm Melinda Montoya's mother and Kayla Van Lanningham's grandmother. Kayla was killed by an inintended driver on July 22nd while crossing on her bike at the Hana Royal Bike Path at the Carlisle and Delamar intersection. The driver admitted she did not notice the flashing lights for the stopped cars. She struck and killed Kayla. Kayla was only a few houses away from her home. Kayla never made it home that day. My granddaughter had her whole life ahead of her, and that was cut short. The current law and ordinances have some crossings appearing to be protected, but legally are not. Cyclists do not have the same protection as pedestrians under the current ordinance. That's a big red flag to me. The driver was not charged with a single offense despite clear negligence, which resulted in the death of my granddaughter, Kayla. The ordinance before you has been reviewed and updated to reflect the changes that have occurred in the last 50 years. So moving forward, there will be driver accountability and vulnerable road user protection. In addition, I believe that there was and is an assumption- In addition, I believe that there was and is an assumption by myself and some of the public that you slow down and yield in the case of yellow caution lights, although my observation at that crossing proves me wrong. Honestly, I'm angry that it is, had, had to be the death of my granddaughter and the advocacy of my daughter to bring this issue to light. I appreciate that the council has seen what a serious problem this is, and have addressed the ordinance and infrastructure concern to protect vulnerable road users. If my daughter had known what she knows now, then my granddaughter would never have been permitted to use the crossing and may have been alive today. Kayla's death revealed deep flaws in how our laws protect the most vulnerable pedestrians, cyclists, and people with disabilities. I support the proposed changes to this ordinance, which is the foundation and a step towards the prevention of future needless deaths in the city of Albuquerque. In addition, my hope is there will be a proactive process to review this ordinance in the future. My granddaughter lost her precious life, and my family will struggle without her till the end of our lives. Thank you.
Tad Yumitski, followed by Eva Montoya.
Thank you, Tad Yumitski again. Okay, at about 10:30, I was in one business at, uh, Car, at Carlisle and Central. I just, I had to get to my house and then get ready to get here. Going to Wyoming Central, when I approached St. Pedro, I noticed already traffic back up. All, all, all the way to Louisiana. I don't know how far, much farther, because I know that people taking, looking for, to exit, uh, Central, they go south, you can go north, because that's state, state property. So anyway, here, here is, it was parked cars, homeless people that first street south, I believe that they had said, homeless people all over, all over to each other, halfway from St. Pedro and Louisiana. Well, where we, what is going on? Where does money go? Why don't you do something about? Police officer also hard to get, because they are busy with homeless people, et cetera, et cetera. They just simply discussing why? Because you taking, laying, laying at on Central and other streets too.
Eva Montoya, followed by Sonae Perez.
Good evening, President Hassan, council members. Um, I'm just here to support the amending of the traffic code, and here to support my mom and my sister, and I, and everything they've said earlier. Um, yeah, it's, our whole family's been struggling with everything that's going on, and it's good to see that there's changes being made, and I really appreciate everything you all are doing. Um, I, you know, honestly, I didn't know a, a lot of the issues we had with like, um, you know, just looking up the whole Vision Zero program and stuff like that, and I hope these changes make, put us on the track to actually achieve that in the future. And there's a lot of work we have to do with the city, and it's not just changing these laws, it's the culture too of our city that needs to change as far as, as driving goes, and people being more attentive, and changing the infrastructure, so. It's just hard, like, losing Kayla, she was so precious, and, I don't know. Just thank you all, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Sonae Perez.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Sonae Perez. Uh, I live in Martinez Town, and, uh, in this neighborhood, there are a ton of speed bumps, which I am thankful for, and would like to ask for speed bumps on Carlisle, close to Delamar, where Kayla Van Lanningham lost her life. This intersection, as well as the one in front of UNMH on Stanford and Lomas, where Alec Montoya also lost his life, are problematic intersections. I was told that because of the speed limit, putting the speed bumps, the, speed bumps there would make it more dangerous for drivers. These higher speed limits puts residents and pedestrians at risk. I support the traffic code and sidewalk ordinance and the resolution to improve safety, because it provides a framework to address these gaps. I am asking the city to extend the traffic calming and speed control to areas around these established cycling paths, and I'm very disappointed that the mayor himself said during a press conference that they were aware that this was a dangerous intersection, and yet wasn't impelled to do anything about it until Kayla's life was unjustly taken away. To add insult to injury, there has been no charges. No one has been held accountable. With all due respect, I appreciate the city's efforts now, but frankly, it seems like it's too little, too late. And I pray that all of our loved ones are safe, driving, walking, cycling on the streets of our city. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes comment on O-98. Thank you.
Councilors, we're on O-98 as amended. Any questions or comments? Councilor Feeblecorn to close.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I, I just wanna start with saying that, I said this last time, and I'll say it again, this is really for Kayla. I was never lucky enough to meet Kayla, but I have met her mom, and, um, if she's anything like her mom, she was an incredible young woman, and I'm very sorry that, um, the family is going through what they've gone through. But I do wanna say that this legislation that you hear, that you're seeing tonight is because, um, just days after her daughter's death, Melinda Montoya reached out to me to meet, to say what can we do to make things better for other people? And I think that's an incredible thing to do. I'm not sure I would have even been up yet, and she was already wanting a meeting, wanting to know how do we make it better for others. Um, so we pulled together a working group, and I wanna thank all of the folks that participated in that working group, including Senator Sedia Lopez, um, Senator Bergman, Representative Parahun, all the Bike ABQ folks that came together and thought through what can we do in this legislation, in the next piece of legislation, at the state. All of those levels were discussed, and I'm really proud of that working group. So, I definitely agree, this is too late, um, but it, it's, it's time to do this, we have to do this for others, and I think that's what Melinda, um, and Kayla would have wanted. I just wanna point out that when our original cut, traffic codes were put in place, there weren't Hawk signals. They didn't even exist in Albuquerque, and so we have to update this, we have to show how they work. I do wanna point out also, that there is a Hawk signal going in at the, the, um, intersection where Kayla's accident was, and so, that is in progress, and we will do more, we're having seven in the next year, and I'm, hopefully to be able to raise money for additional ones. But it only works if there's also legislation behind it that says that if you don't do what you're supposed to at a Hawk signal, you can get in trouble. So I think everybody deserves to be safe, um, no matter how they get around town, and that's the aim of this legislation, and I urge your support.
The motion is for O-98 as amended. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Baca.
Yes.
Councilor Champagne.
Yes.
Councilor Feeblecorn.
Yes.
Councilor Grouse.
Yes.
Councilor Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Pinya.
Yes.
Councilor Rogers.
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Hassan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving on to R. 196, Councilor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam President. R. 196 is taking measures to improve safety for bicyclists, pedestrians, and other vulnerable road users. I move a due pass.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Grouse. Councilor Feeblecorn to open.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is the accompanying piece of legislation. This one says that while we just passed a really important update to our traffic code, it's only as good as the education and outreach that we do with the community, so that everyone knows about it. And so, this is saying that we will have a comprehensive, um, education and outreach program, that we will also be sure that everybody who's driving a vehicle for the city of Albuquerque will also receive that training. And so I think it's, it's the perfect accompaniment, and I, I think Councilor Grouse said it last time, and I'll say it this time, this is actually in my mind more important than the actual update to the traffic code. We have to make sure people understand what's expected of them, if they're driving a vehicle, or if they're on a bike, or if they're on foot. Everyone needs to know the rules, so that we do not continue to be number one in the nation for traffic deaths. It is unacceptable for our city.
Councilors, there are a couple of amendments. Councilor Grouse, amendment number one, marked A in our packet.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, floor amendment number one, will we do it number one? Um, it is, um, on page two, line 11, delete paragraph C of section two, and replace it with the following. See, the administration, beginning January 2026, shall monthly present at the city council meeting on the public education campaign's progress, scope, methods, actions, outcomes, and if additional resources are required, the presentation shall occur through the term of the campaign. The reason for this is providing monthly, uh, presentations at the council meeting on public education campaigns creates one more conduit to educate the public about the changes to the traffic code. It also informs, this, informs the city council on the progress of the campaign, and provides the administration with the opportunity to request additional resources if needed. I move, uh, for this amendment.
Second. There's a motion and a second by Councilors Feeblecorn and Champagne. Councilors, any questions on amendment number one? Councilor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam President. Could we just switch the, the monthly and present? So it says present monthly instead of monthly present?
I think that that might be a clerical error, or a clerical change, more than actually needing to change anything further.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I just like to be, read, read clearly.
Clearly, sure.
Councilors, any other questions? I do have a question. How long, uh, in reading this legislation, uh, how long is the public education campaign?
Madam President, would you like for me to answer?
Okay, in just a minute, thank you. Mr. Menakucci, do you know, does it, yeah.
Madam, madam, Madam President, members of the council, looking at the camp, looking at the, at the resolution, it doesn't say a specific term. It does have monthly, it does have a reporting time of 120 days, and then again, it does have monthly, um, uh, a monthly report. You, I think you might wanna defer to the, to the sponsor who wrote it, what their intent was, however, these campaigns are known to kinda have a life, a long life, to make them effective. They can start out with a head, an intense period, then as time goes on, as the people who have to enforce and so forth notice that there's reeducation needed, they can reinstitute some education. The example I would give would be the DWI and speeding campaigns.
Thank you, and I am going to ask the counselor, but I also wanted to hear from the director of the intent, and what the understanding is for the length of the campaign.
Um, Madam President, so we in the Department of Municipal Development and the city generally strongly support the sentiments that the educational campaign is, is the most important part, once we get the law changed. And so, I agree with Mr. Menakucci that there's no intent for an end date of this campaign. I think honestly, just like city driver training, just like all the trainings that we do, it should be ongoing, and we should see what works, what doesn't work. I'm happy to present to council on how it's going, and, and what improvements that we're seeing, and so, I, I do not envision an end date at all, um, and I think we, we see what's working and what's not, and hopefully, I will be presenting to you on the greatly reduced number of, um, traffic accidents that we will be seeing through all of the changes we're doing here tonight.
Thank you, and Counselor, I don't know if you have a different opinion that you wanna make sure to, I'm gathering all of the opinions to make sure that it's clear.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I definitely agree with Director Turner that there's no end date, but one of the reasons that we specifically said in this legislation that we will utilize free, um, free things like billboards and radio spots and public service announcements, is that we can continue that for as long as we need to, hopefully forever. Um, the intent was the upfront part, and the development of the actual outreach campaign would be kind of intensive, and we would do a lot of those things, but we can continue it into the future, using our free PSA activities, um, so that it's not a giant hit to our, um, budget, but also, we continue to remind people that when you use the roads in whatever format, you have responsibilities.
Thank you. And to be clear, I think that it seems, based off of committee in the last council meeting, it seems like everybody agrees. I hate to always, I don't wanna speak on everybody's behalf, but it seems like everyone said, at one point or another, this is super important to have the education campaign. My heartburn comes from the idea that we have council rules on how many presentations are set up per each council agenda, and if we start dictating monthly reports and monthly presentations for one thing, then that, to me, is going to start adding up on how is this going to look for the rest of the month, how is this going to look for the other important presentations? Uh, and my curiosity was at first, if this was going to be a 180-day campaign, then I could see, all right, let's, let's suck this up for six months, but if this is going to be something in perpetuity, I, on one hand, agree, we should use any kind of means necessary to make sure that the public is aware of the education, the, the, the means necessary to make sure they learn how. Um, but I, I don't think I support doing it monthly. I don't know if an EC quarterly would work. I don't know if the first three months, we have a monthly presentation, but then after that, it turns to an EC quarterly, which then one of us can pull, and we can discuss further at a council meeting. Uh, but I really hesitate to start, uh, putting into legislation that we're going to have monthly reports and monthly presentations on things, because I'm really concerned that's gonna end up having an unintended consequence for everybody. Councilor Grouse.
Madam President, I do, um, I do share that, I, thank you for that concern, I, that makes sense to me. What's important to me is while this is, you know, we're trying to get the education out to people, and so while it's being developed, I think that, like, we get all these monthly or weekly reports every two weeks, but our, our process is to get the word out, and so I don't want it to be an EC that we just read every, you know, and then nobody else sees it, because people don't read the ECs like we do, and so they have no idea, and the purpose of this is to get the word out and to educate the public. And so, um, we could amend this amendment, um, but I want it, while it's being in development, I'd really like it to be shared, um, monthly, which would be every other, uh, council meeting. We could, we could adjust this to be for the next six months, if we want. Um, and then, um, and then like you recommend, um, we, we can go, we can change it and pull it off in EC, but maybe, so how could we change that?
So, Councilor Grouse, I think that I will make an, I'm gonna make a motion to amend amendment number one to R. 196, and to say that it shall read, shall present monthly at the city council meeting for the first 180 days, beginning in January 2026, and then quarterly, through the form of an EC thereafter.
A second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Grouse. I can try to repeat that. For the clerk, or for staff, we're pretty close, you can always watch it again. After January 2026, shall present monthly for the first 180 days, and then quarterly through the form of an EC thereafter. Second is by Councilor Grouse. Any questions to the amendment, to amendment number one? All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Baca.
Yes.
Councilor Champagne.
Yes.
Councilor Feeblecorn.
Yes.
Councilor Grouse.
Yes.
Councilor Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Pinya.
Yes.
Councilor Rogers.
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Hassan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, Councilors, we're back on amendment number one as amended. Any other questions or comments? You have, Councilor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna make sure that we flipped the shall and the monthly, because I didn't see that reflected. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Grouse to close on amendment number one as amended.
Thank you, I just, I just, I would be heartbroken if my, I don't want this ever to happen to anybody, and so, like you said, Councilor Feeblecorn, um, you, the Montoya family, you are very brave, and I wanna thank you, and I wanna make sure that people know that there are changes to this traffic code, and we need to educate them. And so that is my goal, to make sure that no other children or grandchildren or, or adults get hurt, so that's, thank you. Thank you for your bravery, and I urge your support on this.
Councilors, the amendment is, amendment number one as amended for R. 196. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Baca. Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Yes.
Counselor Grout?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penya?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Bassam?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Moving on to Counselor Grout, amendment number two is marked as B in your packets.
Thank you, Madam President. Floor amendment number two. This one is talking about crosswalks, striped crosswalks. And so on page two, line 14, change section three's severability to read section four severability, and after lines 13, insert a new section as follows. Section three, the administration shall submit for introduction by May 1st, 2026, an executive communication to the city council that provides a report on the number of striped crosswalks in the city, the number of striped crosswalks that require restriping, and the cost to re-stripe those crossings. The reason for this, we need to, we need to start getting those crosswalks better, visually a better condition, and it's going to take some time. When you go through, when you drive through the city, you can see some crosswalks that are hard to see, and we need to make sure that pedestrians and anybody that's walking and using them, bikers, they need to be able to see, and so we need to make sure, but it's going to take some time. And so we're also getting ready for the budget, and so we need to have those numbers so we can kind of be preparing for that as well. So it is a process, and that's, so I hope this one will pass.
Counselor Champagne?
Madam President, this kind of goes along with a question or a comment I was going to have over the overall bill, but reading this, it's appropriate for now. And I don't know, Counselor Grout, if this is even possible to add to this. My concern is something that the family had said that the offender of the accident said she didn't see the lights flashing. Not only do we need to make sure, as our responsibility as the stewards of the city, to make sure the crosswalks are painted right, but that the flashing lights are functioning, clean, clear, if there are halogen lights compared to LED lights, if they're operational, because as they attested to, that their reasoning was, I didn't see it. That shouldn't be an excuse, and it shouldn't be an opening for an excuse on the part of us as counselors and as, as a city to say that that wasn't functioning properly. So I don't know if we can add to that, onto that report of a status of all the the flashing lights for bike paths and making sure that they are up to code or working, cleaned, and preferably LED switched out from a halogen to an LED light, so it is bright.
Counselor Champagne, is that a question?
I, it kind of is. I mean, it's an asking if it's possible to add to the amendment because of the electronic side of it and the parts of the crosswalk, if that's acceptable.
Perhaps, I don't, oh, Director Turner is back there. I don't know. I don't know if you have an answer as to can we just change out from halogen to LED and all of that and make sure to have a maintenance plan?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, so we, whenever we learn of a signal that's not working, a light that's not working, you know, we have flashing beacons all around the city, and we have those like speed radar machines all around the city, and so as soon as we learn that one is having problems, we send someone out to investigate it, and unfortunately, a lot of the equipment has long lead times, and so we're not able to switch it out as quickly as we would like. So yes, we are aware of all of our equipment around the city. It is a massive amount, and I am worried that if we are investigating all of it all the time in a very short amount of time, that that limits the time that my teams have to actually improve some of these other crossings and deal with emergency knockdowns and all the other things that we're responsible for. So I absolutely think it is a fair question, and we always are looking for flashing beacons that aren't working, but an affirmative inventory within five months is really going to stretch our resources, and so that, that's just my concern. Although I think as the city, we should have, you know, an inventory of all of our facilities. I just don't want to spend, it's just a compressed time period.
Counselor Champagne?
Madam President, I believe the amendment says that they will report on the number of crosswalks and the cost that require the ones that are not up to par. It isn't fixing them, so is it, is the five-month period just to count impossible?
Counselor Champagne, are you asking about crosswalks now or hawk, but hawk lights or?
No, not a hawk button, no, flashing beacons. I mean, the amendment states that we were asking to count the crosswalks and say, okay, we have 73,000 crosswalks, and of the 73, I don't, I don't know the number, ma'am, but of the 73,000, 64 of them need to be repainted. I'm simply asking, can we do the same and count the number of beacons that are not flashing or not LED or not fixed and say, we have 18,000 of them, 16 of them need to be fixed, or 16 of them need to be LED? Is it, is a five-month period unreasonable to simply do an inventory check?
Director?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, if we assign a lot of resources to it, then yes, we can do an inventory check within that time period. Again, I'm just concerned about it pulling from the other tasks that we have before us in municipal development, but yes, we can get it done.
Madam President and Counselor Grout, would you be open to amending your amendment to add in the electronic beacons as a simple count of, a simple inventory count? Here's what we have, and more specifically, how many beacons we have, how many are halogen compared to LEDs? How many need to be repaired?
Counselors will need either a motion from one of you or Counselor?
Then I'd like to make a motion, Madam President, to add to amendment number two the number of beacons within the city purview or the city, within the city. Moreover, if they're LED compared to halogen, and if they're in working order or need repair.
It looks like staff is doing that.
If I need a second on it.
Ms. Kulaedon?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, during the discussion, we actually put together a possible amendment. If, it's, it's on your iPads and up on the screen if you'd like to review that and see if that captures what you were hoping to accomplish, and I can also read it out. So the report would include the status of the condition of signals at crosswalks and improvements that are recommended and estimated costs.
That reads perfectly. Thank you, Ms. Kulaedon. Will you second it then? Okay.
Okay, so it seems as though we have a motion to amend amendment number two to include what is now on the screen and what was just read by Ms. Kulaedon, seconded by Counselor Grout. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I'm sorry to ask Director Turner to come back down, but I do have a question on this. I think I know the answer to this because I've been speaking with Director Turner daily for a month or so now. But what is your priority right now in terms of getting the hawk signals installed or getting any of this installed? What are, what are the priority projects right now?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, so I have with me our Bike Ways Plan that you all passed unanimously at about 3:00 in the morning last December, and it actually has in it a list of all the very high, high, medium projects that we're planning on in the city. In that list, we actually have 257 crossings that need improvements, which is a mix of pedestrian hybrid beacons or hawks, and rapid rectangular flashing beacons, as well as what we call geometric striping, which is stop signs and signals and other sort of cheaper improvements like that for lower traffic roads. And so we already, we have a list of all of our priority crossings. It is very long. We're working really hard on it now, as you alluded to, with many hawks going up around the city. And so we, we have a plan, and we've prioritized all of it, and I'm always happy, and I have our transportation planning manager Valerie Hermanson, we're always happy to talk about specific crossings that folks have questions about. And they are prioritized based on our Hvin network, so our high fatality, serious injury network that documents traffic crashes, and then also based on sort of trying to do entire trails as opposed to just, like, I would call them island crossings, so we can get like maximum efficiency in the improvements that we're making. High corridors that there's a lot of traffic, transit corridors, we have kind of a list of things that we use to prioritize. And again, I'd encourage everyone to take a look at our list in the Bike Ways Plan.
Thank you, Madam President. So if I can just follow up with, because I understand DMD, like every city department, has a limited number of people to do a lot of work. And is it, is it, it's my feeling, but I would love to hear from you. If we take people off of getting those hawks installed onto doing an inventory, will that delay the installation of those seven hawks that we have promised at news conferences and talked to the media about and told the bike advocates were coming? Is it going to delay those installations?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, I'm just concerned, as you said, about staff capabilities when we are trying to implement all of these improvements. I was just talking to Ms. Hermanson about how we could do the inventory that Counselor Champagne suggested. I always like to say yes, you guys all know this about me. And so we're trying to think outside the box on how we could achieve that inventory. But again, we don't have an unlimited number of employees, but I, I'm confident in our ability to think outside the box to meet whatever, whatever demands are put on us through the ordinance or the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So I, you know, I want all of these things, all of them tomorrow. I would like everything improved. But realistically, I'm just worried that we are putting too much, too fast on DMD, and what I really want is those hawk signals installed so that what we've seen happen in our community doesn't happen again. And I will just clarify that to my knowledge, and I've been talking about this a lot for the last couple of months, I'm pretty sure I would know, I, there's no indication anywhere that there was a malfunctioning light of, of any sort. People are just not paying attention when they drive, but there is no reason to believe that there were any lights that were malfunctioning. So I would just urge us to keep our eye on the most important things right now, and the most important thing right now is getting hawk signals in where we need hawk signals and getting improvements made to crosswalks where we need improvements. So, thank you.
Counselor Grout?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question about that report that we passed at 3:00 in the morning last year. Director, thank you. Can, you'll have to refresh my memory. Does the report tell us, like, we have priorities, but does it have a timeline? And how are you doing on the, on the priorities? How far have you gone in 11 months? What have you accomplished, and how long will it take you to accomplish the whole list?
Madam President and Counselor Grout, so what the plan does is it, it labels everything with a timeframe of, is this plausible near term, is it long term, is it like, we can do it tomorrow? And so you can kind of look at your project and say, perhaps there are right-of-way issues, and solving this problem is going to require years of litigation with landowners, you know? We don't, some things we unfortunately can't control. So no, it does not say, like, in nine months, we'll do this. It just prioritizes and says cost estimate of how much it will cost, and then is it plausible in the near term or long term? Again, it's all contingent on funding, of course, and I think the ordinance that you just passed dedicated our automated speed enforcement funding to the plan and to Vision Zero, and so we're very grateful for that. And so there's a lot of, I guess, there are funding complications involving the different measures that are provided. So no, there is no specific, like, this will be done in six months, this will be done in nine months. I'd be happy to list the, where we are on many of the things. I know, for example, Buena Vista Bike Boulevard is called out in here, and we've had several well-attended, supportive public meetings about that project over the last few months. I think some, a couple of you went to those meetings, actually. So I'd have to go through and give you an update on each individual project, but we are making a lot of progress on them.
Thank you. One follow-up. Are any of the projects on that list done? Are any of the projects on that list done?
Madam President, Counselor Grout, I'm not aware of any being done, but it does have the improved crossing on Carlisle at Del Mar, which will be done in the next couple of weeks.
And that's on the list?
Yes, that is on the list, and it is under construction right now.
Well, I'm really glad that's the first one that's being done on that list. A little too late, but it's still, I'm glad it's being done, and it's not your fault, I understand. Thank you.
Director, I have a question. Are outside contractors going to be installing any, any and all or some of the hawk lights, or is it DMD staff?
Madam President, great question. So we have partnerships with outside contractors. We have staff who are the engineers and the project managers, and they work hand-in-hand with our, with outside engineers as well as with the contractors. In Albuquerque, we do not have as many contractors as we would like working on striping and on some of these signal issues because it, there's always, it seems like there's always long lead times, there's always scheduling issues with some of these projects. So, so yes, it is both city staff and outside contractors.
Thank you. And then I have another question, more on the legal standpoint of this, because I agree, I agree with Counselor Feeblecorn that I want all of it. I mean, it makes sense, all of these are good things. I'm going to preface my question with, I think that both this amendment and even the amendment to the amendment, I would prefer to see in an objective for the city rather than in this resolution. I think that to find some kind of balance between how do we make this really happen, because it's super important, but also not bind us in a corner when we have other things to do without compromising additional safety hazards. But my question for legal, and I'll start with Ms. Kulaedon and then ask Mr. Rowland too, is if we were to go ahead and say we want to do an inventory of all of the different lighting and whatever, and if they're working and not, and have that in a report by May, what does that do for liability? Not that I'm saying we shouldn't want to know and that we shouldn't want to fix things and that they shouldn't malfunction in the first place, but if we put them in a public report, what is that going to do for the timeline of repair? If we can't fix something and we know it's broken and something else happens, what does that do for liability for the city?
Madam President, so the, the report that exists does currently contain some of those inventory provisions, and so that, that sort of is already, already in existence. I think that there are certainly some liability issues that could arise now and if we continue to include that information in our report. So I think that that's a, that's a valid question.
Mr. Rowland, do you have anything else to add or?
Yes, President Bassam. Knowledge, knowledge can always increase liability, so I don't want to sit here and say that anytime, we don't want to avoid finding knowledge just for the sake of avoiding liability. But when it comes to this, to city and municipality liability and government liability, knowledge isn't on its own what sets the liability. There is the capability of the municipality to act on that knowledge that makes a significant difference. So I wouldn't want to sit here and from a legal opinion caution against doing the work to find out what is safe or not safe, or what needs to be repaired or isn't repaired. But I, to answer your question directly, anytime the city has knowledge of something and does not do something based on that knowledge, it does increase the liability, but that's not to say that there aren't defenses to that liability if it does come up.
Okay, and I mean, I, again, I think that this is really And I mean, I, again, I think that this is really good, but I, I would prefer to see it in an objective so that we can have a goal without backing us into a corner with timelines that we might be setting ourselves up to fail, not because of anybody trying to do something wrong or, but just truly resources. And so, so those are my concerns and reasons. And some of the questions that I had, Counselor Champagne, you also had questions?
Madam President, no, I think you, your term that she said is, is a goal. I saw this as an opportunity with, with Counselor Grout's amendment as here, let's do this. It was announced here that we go and repair things when we're notified that they're broken. I, I want the city, I want us to be able to proactively go at it. We should have an inventory of what the crosswalks are. We have, we have an inventory of our trees in our parks of how long they've been. There's an app that the parks look at and go, oh, that tree's been there for this many years and was planted here. We need to be proactive in this and know what our inventory is, know why a, a crosswalk is timed. It's 10 years, it needs to be repainted. So, and, and maybe the, the, the fear of the May 1st timeline is saying that it's, it puts a crucial, uh, the time crunch is too much, but I'm trying to be proactive, not to say that something was broken, but I don't want the excuse to be there. I don't want someone to go, I didn't see it because it wasn't, it was dirty or we had, we lost an officer because he hit the back of a street sweeper that the lights weren't working and two of them were dirty. And since then, they make sure before they get in the street sweeper that the light bar is cleaned and it's available and, and it's visible. So I'm, I'm just trying to get the city to be a little more proactive and be ahead of the game instead of waiting behind something to happen. So I, I don't, I'd like your idea that it's, and, and maybe it's not an amendment, and I don't know the term you used, that it's a goal. Let's do this. Let's get the inventory, let's get the crosswalks done so that now if it isn't in this budget, it's in the cleanup of next year or something where we can look at it and go, we need to fix this and get ahead of the game. So great point of how you put it, that it's a goal of ours. Thank you.
Okay. So with that though, Counselor, we are still on amendment, amending amendment number two to include what was added by staff earlier for doing this count, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and I urge your support.
Okay. So the motion is amending amendment number two to R. 196, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Baca.
Yes.
Counselor Champagne.
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn.
No.
Counselor Grout.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Penney.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Hassan.
No.
Passes on a seven-two vote.
We are on amendment number two to R. 196, Counselors. Any additional comments or questions? Counselor Grout to close.
I, um, I can tell you right now, Central, no, San Pedro and Menal and San Pedro and Lomas, those, those crosswalks are very hard to read, to see. And I don't want, I don't want an excuse that I couldn't see it. So that's, I want this. I want, this is important to me and I like the proactive. We need to be proactive instead of reactive because that's what we're doing right now is reactive to something that happened. We need to be proactive. I urge your support.
The motion is for amendment number two as amended to R. 196, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Baca.
Yes.
Counselor Champagne.
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn.
No.
Counselor Grout.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Penney.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Hassan.
No.
Passes on a seven-two vote.
All right, Counselors, we are back on R. 196 as amended. Are there any other amendments? All right, we will go on to public comment. Mr. Cornelius.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Melinda Montoya followed by Diana Zamora.
Good evening, President Hassan and council members. My name's Melinda, I'm Kayla's mom. I really just hope that you all vote in favor of this resolution and I also appreciate this amendment that you guys just made in order to be proactive for all road users, not just the vulnerable road users, including the drivers. I mean, it's important that we see these things as well. I, as a healthcare provider and as I navigate also completing another degree in public health education, it's a crucial piece in lasting behavior change. I hope that you also consider partnering with APS to educate our youth as campaigns such as the Quit Smoking campaign were absolutely successful due to the youth outreach and the messages they brought home. They will be the first to police their families to call out behavior changes. As a mother, this component is also important because when Mayor Keller called me to tell me that the Hawk light was going to go up, I had two concerns. One, we didn't have a code to support it and two, how are we going to get people to actually use the lights correctly as they're shown to only be moderately better than no light if there's no education? So this resolution is absolutely essential to reinforce the safety and knowledge to properly use this safety infrastructure. I hope that you also can consider expanding educational campaign to contain comprehensive education around vulnerable road users. Motorists must be educated because the onus of safety knowledge shouldn't solely be on the vulnerable road user to remain safe. Motorists should also be reminded and reeducated about the Albuquerque Traffic Code concerning cyclists, especially if road updates don't include bike lanes, because drivers really need that visual reminder of what a bike lane is and they often forget that cyclists get to use the roads as well. Finally, this resolution is an essential step in the health of the public and can help make Albuquerque a safer place to drive, bike and walk. And I say thank you and I know Kayla would too, so thank you guys.
Diana Zamora followed by Eva Montoya.
Good evening, Madam President Hassan and members of the City Council. Again, my name's Diana Zamora, Melinda's Montoya's mom and Kayla Ben-Landy Nan's grandmother. Again, my granddaughter was killed by an inattentive driver on July 22nd while crossing on her bike at the Hana Royal Bike Path at Carlisle and Del Mar. The crossing had flashing yellow lights and signage indicating pedestrians and cyclists might be present, which did not protect my granddaughter. My understanding is within a few weeks, the high-intensity activated crosswalk Hawk system will be put in place at the Hana Royal Bike Path. I wanted to follow up on what education has been communicated to whom, through what means, and how do we know learning has occurred? What city department will be responsible for education and training or will there be another organization? How will Vision Zero be incorporated into public, into the public education campaign? Will there be public transparency and communication? Do you have any examples of current public education campaigns that have a documented scope, methodology and reported outcomes? I know that there was an infographic on the Hawk system lights with driver and pedestrian expectations that was shared that was very clear and concise. I thought that that was really helpful. Some other important education topics, clear education regarding yellow lights or in the case, in this case flashing yellow lights, various traffic control devices that are already in use, definitions, the importance that all vulnerable road users are protected, requiring drivers to stop not just yield for vulnerable users in crosswalks or crossings, prohibiting drivers from passing stop vehicles at crosswalks at flashing beacons, strengthening driver's duty, driver's duty of care around bikeways, trails and crossings. When operating a vehicle, motor should always be alert as people may cross inappropriately and slow down as to not hit pedestrians, bicyclists, et cetera. The fact that bicycles are classified as vehicles allowed on roads and bike paths but not on sidewalks unless being blocked, leaving them in gray areas of protection. Thank you for committing yourselves to the safety of all human beings in the city of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Eva Montoya followed by Sonae Perez.
President Hassan, City Council members, I'm just here to support my mom and my sister who just spoke. I'd also like to add, maybe you guys could add QR codes to this new infrastructure to, so residents could easily report if they're damaged or not functioning properly. It's relatively cheap and it'd make things like a lot faster, I don't know, for, for the city to react and repair things as they're damaged and also educate people. That, that's, that's a thing that they could use to report these things when they see something that's wrong or not working properly. Also, to just like, the speeds of our, the vehicles in the streets are, are too high, I think, in a lot of places and like, for example, Carlisle and many of the streets in that area of town, they're, they're, the three-lane roads are, are basically being operated like little mini freeways and people treat them like that and they speed constantly through those areas. It's like, do, do we need like the three lanes? I think those areas of town could be served by like a bus lane and you could slow traffic down better so we're not having these accidents where people are getting killed at high speed. And that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Sonae Perez followed by Tad Nyumizki.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Sonae Perez and I'd like to thank you for your attention to detail on this bill and this amendment as well. I think that the education regarding these lights needs to be foolproof, meaning like a child can understand what to do when they get to these lights. Specifically, that crosslight, crossway, I have seen it flash yellow even when nobody was there. And so it is confusing and so I think that it's important for us to make sure that they're operating correctly and, you know, perhaps making the education of how to approach these intersections required to renew your driver's license. The program that Kayla was working at, the Esperanza Bike Shop, I was a part of, I took those classes and it made me super hyper-aware of cyclists after taking that. And honestly, it was something that was life-changing for me as well. And so I really commend that program and I want that program to continue so that all of our cyclists and all of the people that take part of that program can respect cyclists on the road. Thank you.
Tad Nyumizki.
Thank you, Tad Nyumizki. This is Central Avenue, it's connected east and west of Albuquerque, was very first major street. Bicycle do simply do not belong on the Central Avenue. Now, why, that started with eliminating lanes. Now, not only transit, but between U-Bank and Wanto Bo or U-Bank, yeah, that's right, for buses only lane, another lane taken away with Washington and Central Westbound. Only one lane for motorists. Central belongs to motorists, private or government-driven. Very simple and you are creating nuisance by your ordinance and changes pumping money into Central Avenue, safety, put fences all over on the middle of Central Avenue. Well, that's where we live these days. That is, are you going to eliminate, creating, that is your safety.
Madam President, that concludes comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Any questions or comments? Ms. Kuliran? I have another amendment that came up from the conversation just now and I need help figuring out exactly where it's going to go because basically it's going to go after the amendment I did at the last meeting where we added in that the administration shall provide educational campaign materials to all Traffic Safety Bureau and Motor Vehicle Division-registered drivers' education schools and learning centers in the city of Albuquerque and to APS. And I would like to make a motion for amendment number three to R. 196 to add and to APS at the end of that area. There's a second by Counselor Champagne. Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Kuliran, is that, or any other staff? Should be pretty simple, but I do think that that was a very, very good point and I think that while we're distributing educational materials, we should distribute it to the educators.
Madam, Madam President, yes, we can make that amendment. So it will be on page two, line five, we'll add and Albuquerque Public Schools APS at the end of the list.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions or comments? The motion is for amendment number three to R. 196, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Baca.
Yes.
Counselor Baca, thank you. Counselor Champagne.
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn.
Yes.
Counselor Grout.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Penney.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Hassan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Counselors, we are on R. 196 as amended. Counselor Feeblecorn?
Madam President, I just wanted to verify, your amendment was on page one, line 20, right? I think they said the wrong line. It would be on page one, line 20, provided to APD and ACS.
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, there might be a mix-up with the, the line, page and line numbers based on the blue line version.
You're supposed to work off the blue line.
Yes.
So I just wanted to verify that.
Yes. So the intent is to add this to section two, subsection B.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We are on R. 196 as amended. Counselor Feeblecorn to close.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm very thankful that we passed the traffic code update. I want to thank all the counselors for that. But again, that update is only as good as the education and outreach to the community. And so I'm very, very proud of this bill. I think it's, it's really an important part of making sure that everybody's safe because again, everybody deserves to be safe no matter how they get around the city. So I urge your support.
The motion is for R. 196 as amended. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Baca.
Yes.
Counselor Champagne.
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn.
Yes.
Counselor Grout.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis.
Yes.
Vice President Penney.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
President Hassan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Before we move on, can we please, can you make a note, staff, to make sure to add to goals and objectives that whole amendment as well? Just so that eventually, once May is gone and passed, we can go ahead and have it as a golden objective to continue making these improvements and monitoring inventories and whatnot forever as we can moving forward. R. 1, R. 201, Counselor, Counselor Grout.
Thank you, Madam President. R. 201 is preserving the name Juniper Flats for the property located at 25 Hotel Circle Northeast. I move it to pass.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Baca. Counselor Grout to open.
Well, this resolution is asking the, or is asked the administration to keep the name Juniper Flats for the property at 25 Hotel Circle in District Nine. What's in a name? I think there's a lot in a name. I think it's important to preserve the dignity of senior citizens who will be living in this facility. Removing this housing complex or renaming this housing complex to Gateway Senior tells everyone that it's a homeless shelter and it's not a homeless, homeless shelter. It's simply basic housing that is affordable for low-income seniors. People have worked hard all their, for a long time, for, for a long time at their jobs, but a lot of times those jobs didn't offer pensions or 401Ks and they counted on their social security to meeting their needs in retirement, but sadly that hasn't happened. And they needed, they don't deserve to get stuck in a homeless shelter. And so I think we should give them some dignity of affordable housing with a name that sounds like it's a regular apartment complex. So I urge your support.
Counselors, we are on R. 201. Any questions or comments? Madam CEO?
Madam President, thank you. Counselor Grout and I had the opportunity to speak earlier today, so I shared some of my thoughts at that time and like to be, I think it's important to put those on the record for you all, recognizing that council has, of course, the authority to name entities and facilities and not balking at that, obviously. I will just point out a few things that I think are an opportunity that will be lost as a result of this and I think it's as a result of this and I think it's important to, to clarify that why. Juniper Flats as a name is a made-up name by a developer sometime in the last six months. It has little to no meaning except for made up by a developer. I'd also say that, you know, we have typically named, in the housing space, we have Los Altos Lofts. There's lots of thoughts around sometimes making sure we're creating names. Again, when we spoke about this last week, last meeting and the request was made for a decision at that, at that time to change our direction, as I said with Counselor Groun this morning, I don't speak for the mayor unless I've had the opportunity to hear from the mayor and hear his process. So I could not say yes without that, just as I believe is the case for all of you with your staff, they don't act without consulting you all as well. It's just good respect for, for the elected. And so with that, these are my thoughts on this issue and please know that I, I think it's important to, to clarify that I think we have an opportunity to work together to name this, this facility. I'm not unilaterally throwing out Juniper Flats, I just wish that we would do that work and, and come up with the right name with, for the city. Second conversation I had with Counsel was related to section two. You know, we've had conversations about separations of powers, have consulted with our city attorneys and Mr. Rowland can speak more clearly, but you know, my, this to me is, steps over that space in terms of direction, how it is directing. I'm happy for Mr. Rowland to speak to why that is the case for, in my opinion, and he can give his.
Mr. Rowland?
Thank you, Counsel, or President Hassan. When, when the courts look at separation of powers issues, they often, in cases like this, they often look to, towards whether or not the, there's an impingement on, on the executive in the action that's being taken or a micromanagement of, of the, the funding when it comes to the executive actually being able to operate and execute the directive from the legislature. And courts generally look very disfavorably on instances where there is specific micromanagement or impingement on what the executive is wanting to do. So in this case, with a, a very explicit directive within the, within the, the resolution that limits the ability to just simply even put a sign up, becomes very micro, potentially micromanagement and impingement of an executive action based on appropriations that were given by the council. So that, that would be the, the caution here is that this does seem to be going in the path and potentially could be seen, and I would say almost likely could be seen by a court to be infringing on the separation of powers doctrine.
Counselor Groun?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Kulaedon, do you see a separation of powers issue in this resolution?
Madam President, Counselor Groun, I don't and the, the reason is because the directive of the legislature, as Mr. Rowland referred to, is here to keep the name Juniper Flats. And so the restriction on using council-appropriated funds for anything other than the name Juniper Flats would be in line with that directive. And so I see them as, the financial component as sort of a subsidiary of the policy directive of naming this facility Juniper Flats.
Thank you. And I have some follow-up questions.
Counselor Groun, if you don't mind, can I go to public comment real quick?
Sure.
And then I will go to Counsel Feeblecorn and then circle back to you. Mr. Cornelius?
Thank you, Madam President. We have Anami Das to speak.
Hi, y'all. I'll be quick. The process of changing your name is a really expensive pain in the ass and so I wouldn't recommend it, even for a building, for a person, it's hard enough. The other thing is I actually like the new like gateway naming system. I think it's good for like distinguishing which shelters are city-owned and which ones aren't. And I think that blurring the lines between shelters and permanent residents is confusing and strange. Also, the name Juniper Flats sounds like a pretty good drag name and so I support it. Cool, thanks.
That concludes comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilors, either one of you, which, whichever would prefer to go first? Arm wrestle.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a couple of questions, I guess for Dr. Single. Was there any conversation around a middle ground here? Juniper Flats, a gateway facility, or anything that it feels like we can come to some kind of compromise on this that doesn't require a bill to get, get there?
Madam President, Counsel Feeblecorn, we are happy to talk through the, the middle ground and talk about naming. The conversation was at a, at City Council last time and then a resolution came forward. I called Counselor Groun today and, you know, we can work, it's also, we don't own the property yet, we don't have this entity yet, we are in the process of working through that as, and so it, one, it's, we're not there yet. I mean, it's, part of this was a statement that was made and this is a reaction to a statement that was made, happy, as I said, to work through middle ground. We've talked within the city about other things like La Entra and we're, you know, ways to think about the lofts so that it is connected into what we're doing. And we've talked about, you know, a senior living facility, a gateway senior living facility, a gateway network senior living facility as a, as a definer for folks to know where the connections are. This language would indicate we would not be allowed to do anything like that, we can only call it Juniper Flats.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I guess I'm, I don't care about names, but I will say that I, I do want to say very clearly that I don't think there's any loss of dignity with the term gateway in a name. The youth shelter that will be in District Seven is called the Youth Gateway or Gateway Youth or something. That name was changed without my knowledge. I found out about it at a, at a council meeting, so that was upsetting, but I don't think that there's anything problematic with having that term in the name of the facility. I think it, it is what you read into it. But I would, I would really encourage us to find a middle ground that keeps the, I mean, there's already a sign, right? So Juniper Flats is the sign that's up, why would we change that? But I have no problem with, with kind of a tagline or whatever. I just, I just felt like it was disappointing to hear that there was no middle ground that anybody was able to come to. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have some questions, gateway seniors, so can homeless seniors who don't have an income live in Juniper Flats?
Madam President, Counselor Rogers, why do I keep calling? I'm sorry that I keep getting names mixed up today.
We don't look anything alike.
I, just for the record, I've been calling this Rascal Flats accidentally when we've been talking, so I don't know why. And I just said it, so now it's going to happen again. I'm sorry, we have not fully, as you know, we don't have this property. We are working through all of those details. Our intention is for individuals will have, it'll be affordable housing, so they'll, it will be everything from forty percent to eighty percent of AMI for, because it is intended to be affordable housing.
Thank you, Madam President. So that means this is for seniors who could pay for rent, correct?
Madam President, Counsel Rogers? That have some funding for, yes.
Okay, so then that, to me, means it's not a shelter, so shouldn't be lumped in with the gateway networks because it's not a shelter. And I know we, we approved the, and I think that's why I'm confused. I know we already approved the contract for the operator, which is Monarch Properties, without us owning the property. We already passed that. And every paperwork, every piece of legislation, every appropriation, the state contract, everything there says Juniper Flats. And so I, I guess I'm confused on where Gateway Senior came from and if it's not a shelter, like the other gateway system is not permanent supportive, like it's not permanent housing, I don't think it should be called gateway if it's not a shelter. That's, our community knows that that gateway means shelter for the most part, not permanent housing. And so if a senior, that we have over 200 seniors in our gateway system right now, if there's no mechanism for them to be able to live there because they don't have income, right, I don't, I don't agree with it being lumped in with the gateway network. And so we're trying to figure out what the gateway network is. We still haven't even gotten operations for gateway network information that we're getting. I just don't want to muddy the waters there either. Not a question, just my, my observation.
If I may, Madam President, I just want to mention, we have many people within our shelter system that do have income and that's why we are able many times to help those individuals move from the shelter system into housing because they, we're able to work with them, to support them in using that fund, that income or that funding to, to pay for or work with their funding to, to pay for housing.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very aware of the, working with the provider that we have at the gateway, doing the inventory of seniors, I've seen what the income is for the seniors. Most of them make between six and $800 a month. And so I still don't know what the rents are going to be for this, like saying that eighty percent of AMI doesn't tell me what the rent is specifically so that these seniors who make between six and $800 a month can afford to live there. I think that's my concern. So that would be good to know, what, what is the rent going to be for a senior? And most of the seniors on our lists make between six and $800 a month, so that just worries me also, so.
Counselor Groun?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know, I have, there are a lot of, the city owns several properties and they are apartments and they, and the residents that live there have leases. The people that will be living at Juniper Flats are going to have leases. When you think of the gateway system, you think of shelters, you think of help, but you're being, you're being helped and that's great, but it's temporary. And these Juniper Flats is going to be a, a permanent home for these people and they're going to have leases and they should have dignity. I think we're, we're also going to have to fill these properties, these, these homes and I, I just have a, I'm very concerned that it's, people don't want to live in a shelter, gateway shelter, the gateway system is a shelter system and I'm glad we have it, but we need to have, these people deserve dignity. Los Altos Lofts is a nice facility. It's part of the gate, it's not part of the gateway system. There are other, a, a city-owned apartment complexes in District Nine that are for low income and they aren't called gateway system. They aren't because they are permanent homes. And we don't need to be spending money on these new signs. I think Juniper Flats is a lovely name. I know that last, our last meeting, Counselor Lewis named a, a building in his district a name. I would like to name, keep this one Juniper Flats. I think it's a lovely name. And we can spend money on other things. Yes, sir.
Counselor Lewis, and then we'll go back to Counsel Groun to close.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, when the, when the gateway, when it began, it was the, it was the mayor's solution to, and the, and the voters approved the idea, you know, giving the first 15 million to Gate, Gate, Gateway Center, but it was entirely sold on a shelter system. It was entirely sold on specifically, you know, eight years ago, it was about what, what do we do with those, to those that need, that are living on the streets and need shelter right now, need food and clothing. It's always been sold as the idea of a temporary, you know, shelter and system to treat and to help people where their needs are. This, this is a, this is where people live, this is a home. It's got a different name, it's got a different identity and, and I, I don't believe that we, you know, as, as we just pour millions and millions of dollars into the gateway system that we just create more and more, you know, purposes for it, you know, to really, it looks like to justify it. And I also, you know, when, when it comes to something like this, as simple as, you know, the, the council's role in naming buildings and as Counsel Groun mentioned that, you know, we named the facility in my, my district, you know, with, with, you know, definitely conversations and cooperation with the, you know, department there, but something as simple as this, to, to use the separation of powers argument, and we have two different attorneys here and, again, it's just, I, I think that's really bothersome that a, a simple thing like this, that we would bring up the separation of powers and somehow say this is an instance of micromanagement by the council and the only, you know, the only implication of that would be that, well, the mayor's going to sue you if you make decisions like this. And so I would have to, I would have to conclude that you work for the mayor, you're entirely, you know, giving an argument, a legal argument on behalf of the administration, on behalf of the mayor. And I would think that if you work for all of us, that you would, you would analyze it, you'd analyze both ways, not with the idea that, hey, you know, you might get sued. Well, who would sue us? The only one that's going to sue us is you guys. And so it's a pretty, you know, simple thing. I certainly think that, you know, the council should weigh in on these things and certainly Counsel Groun, you know, understanding her, her area and her community and, and representing an, an area that has a, has a real identity, I think it's important. Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel Groun to close.
I, I'm, I'm happy that the city is, is in negotiations to buy this property, to house some fine people in our district, in our city. And I just think that they deserve to live in a home that is, has a lovely name and isn't associated with a shelter system. And I urge your support.
The motion is for R. 201. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Baca?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Feeblecorn?
Yes.
Counselor Groun?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Penney?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Hassan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Councilors, we have no other business and there being no further business, this council meeting is adjourned.